You're good to go.
I want to call to order the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners meeting for April 12, 2022. If you would please stand while Commissioner Hill does the prayer and then we'll do the pledge.
Just pray. Do you have a thought again, we worship and praise you for the opportunity to come here as citizens of the public and the mission that we represent. And we ask you to guide our hands and our thoughts and may everything we do that you are willing to your service. In Christ's name we pray. Commend.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Will Ann?
Yes, sir. We have a petition under section one, and if you will, we'll do this first is to award of the CDVG CV funding for Jackson Hospital. And then also I would ask that we move the discussion of the CDVG grant applications to follow right after number four under section one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donaffrow. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay, at this time, could we get the people from the hospital to come forward? The commissioners, would you come up and do you want to do a picture of just them or?
No, no, we are going to do a picture. If y'all want to come on forward, David Melvin is just going to give y'all a quick reminder of what this funding was for, but y'all can be making your way to take the picture.
The commissioners, if you've joined me out here.
There you go. All right. One, two, three. Six miles. One, two, three.
Look happy. And last one.
Um, it really includes other things too.
David?
Yeah, so briefly reiterate what the grant for the local government had a program called the Community Development Block Grant CD Program. And they gave every local government entity the opportunity to apply for one grant. And and the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners chose to use their one grant application to assist the hospital. And the hospital on their third floor, which was their COVID ward during the COVID pandemic, they had to do a lot of modifications to accommodate that. Hanging plastic sheets to get ventilation outside for each room. They had to go actually physically remove the windows from the hospital. Put plywood there, cut holes in it, stick ventilation units in there. And so the hospital went through a lot of challenges during COVID. And in that process, and so this grant funding will redo that third floor, the HVAC system there to make it compliant. So that the rooms can have a negative pressure and it'd be more set up to deal with infectious diseases and COVID in this. And so I think it's a great tribute to the cooperation of the Jackson County Commission to give their opportunity to apply for a COVID grant to the hospital. And we were informed in the process that this was probably the highest, if not one of the highest scoring applications in the state. Because they really saw the need and what was being addressed there. So I just appreciate, express my appreciation to Jackson County for their willingness to assist the hospital in this endeavor.
David?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other hospitals in the area with this type of arrangement?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'm sure they're they're all adapting to that. The city of Mariana used their opportunity for a CV grant to help their Marion Health and Rehab Center. Because it's got a similar situation with, you know, most of the systems had HVAC systems that that were not set up for the negative pressure to accommodate. And a COVID type pandemic like that. So I'm sure a lot of the hospitals are making that that change to it, some of the old ones. But this will give Jackson Hospital a state of art facility on the third floor to deal with any issues like this again.
Do you have, do you have the breakdown numbers of that check? I know that that a large portion of that went to, is in the.
Yeah, that check had several things in it, but the 2.9 million, two, 2.8 something, approximately $2.9 million is for the hospitals. The rehab of the third floor HVAC system up there.
Any more questions? David, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Justin Perez, come forward.
How y'all doing today? I'm Justin Perez on with Pank here. So we have started an opioid use disorder recovery management program. And we do, we're doing it in the rural communities that we serve. We serve Calhoun, Franklin, Dolph, Jackson, Liberty, and Washington. Now, our goal is to link these people in the rural communities with the the health that they need for their opioid use disorder and substance use disorder. So our program is a wraparound support that provides case management, linkage to care, motivational coaching, resource identification to promote lasting success. And people 13 and over, obviously, if they're 13 to 18, they're going to need parents' consent. But our goal is to heal this community and the other rural communities from the opioid use epidemic, really. And if you think it isn't in your community, you're being naive. And if it's not in your part of the community yet, it will be because this is spreading and it's it's not getting better. So we've decided and we've gotten a grant from Florida and we've dedicated the funds that we got from our grant to helping people get the resources that they need. In the rural communities, whether they know they exist or not. And the purpose of me coming in front of the board today, which I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out, is to let people know that there is resources and that we are here to serve these communities.
Good. Is this part of that opioid settlement, the funds that we're using, you you are using?
We got a grant. We got a grant from the state of Florida. I'm not sure exactly.
Shell, do you know if that's part of the funding that came from the?
I wasn't part of the planning. I was, I'm part of the implementation. So I'm not sure of the the exact name of the grant.
I know there was a considerable amount of money that came down out of that lawsuit that was going to the states. And then the states were turning around. People like this was going to be administering it. I'm just curious.
Okay, I could tell you we have, we we received a million dollar grant for three years. That I do know.
Well, you should clean up all of these counties with a million dollars.
I agree with you 100%. We just need people to be willing, that's all. And we're, we're.
Well, hopefully they will be. Any questions?
Yeah, just real quickly, I use your, your district, your region is seven counties in this area. How will the funds be distributed? Based on population or as need basis?
As need basis. So we've gone out to all the sheriffs, police, making our way to the fire departments, also the commissioners. And we're letting them know that we exist and that we're here. And it's a referral basis. So if the people are, if we get more people from Jackson than we do from Calhoun, it's just the fact that they've been referred to us from there. It's not like we have any exact fund set for the certain counties.
And it's a million dollars for three years or a million dollars, three million dollars for three years. It's a million dollars.
To my understanding, it's $1 million for three years.
No question. Where's your base location, regional location?
Panama City.
Panama City.
And you have actually facilities in all of the counties? I know that there's a PanCare facility here in Jackson County. Is there one in the other six counties as well?
Yes, sir.
Will Ann, do we have this information on our website?
We do not, but we can put it on there.
We put it on there so that people, when they're looking.
And I brought flyers. I don't know if I sent them.
If you would give us one of them.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all. Byron Dickens. Byron Dickens is not here. We're moving on. Judy Austin. We want Judy.
Sorry, Judy's not here. I'm a staff replacement. This is an employee proclamation, whereas Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee. To represent the various departments. And whereas Chelsea Walters began her employment with the county on September 9th, 2015. In the position of paramedic firefighter for Jackson County Fire and Rescue and has been selected as the employee of the month for April 2022. For the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duties. And whereas Ms. Walters is an exemplary employee who demonstrates professionalism in every task she faces. Her loyalty and commitment to Jackson County are noticed and admired by her coworkers. Ms. Walters has perfect attendance. She never calls in or reports late to work. She is willing to work at any station based on the needs of the county and is always, can always be counted on to answer calls timely and effectively, efficiently. Sorry. Whereas Ms. Walters is a dedicated employee that handles issues that arise in a timely and efficient manner. She always goes above and beyond her everyday duties to assist the public and her coworkers. She has built trust with her coworkers and they know that they can count on her. Ms. Walters always has a smile on her face and exhibits a positive attitude when conducting tasks, no matter the circumstances. Ms. Walters sets a good example for other employees with her work ethic and has proven to be a valuable asset to Jackson County Fire Rescue. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida commend and congratulate Chelsea Walters on her selection as employee of the month for April 2022.
Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it. You guys are out here doing a good job. You're saving lives. Okay, we have a motion to approve the signing of the resolution and giving Chelsea a day off and $50. Got a second from Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
I'm trying to do, she gets a third of the shift, she's on work 24 hours or full 24. Good question, though. We thank, we thank the 24 to do it.
One thing that has come to my attention and staff, I think is going to be working on this, but I'll go ahead and throw it out. We perhaps should look at giving a different amount of money. And instead of $50 and a day off, a lot of our employees do not need that day off. So we may want to think about possibly giving $200 and no day off. Because I know Bobby Cook was in here last month. Bobby doesn't need a day off. He's having to burn time. So it's just, I think we may want to think about changing the policy and giving them the option, but mopped out.
I think that's a good idea. Maybe we'll at least need to look at the $50 being adjusted for inflation, but that might.
Well, $50. But anyway, can y'all develop some sort of policy and bring it back to the board?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay.
Jump back and give, did I hear somebody say Byron Dickens was on the?
I don't know.
Just have Fred check with you.
By, hey Fred?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anyone online? Is Byron Dickens on the line?
I do not see his name on here.
Thank you. Okay, Chief Bruner?
Morning commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, this morning, I would like to bring forth a proclamation honoring 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators this week. The week of April 10th through the 16th is National 911 Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. On behalf of the sheriff and I, these dispatchers work tirelessly for both of our departments. And I started my career in 2006 as a dispatcher. So this is, these folks are near and dear to my heart. So if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and start reading the proclamation. Whereas this week is a time to show our appreciation and to recognize that our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of public safety telecommunications. Because emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical service, or other critical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone. The Jackson County 911 Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. These dedicated men and women are the first responders and are more than anonymous voices on the telephone line. They are local police, fire, and medical professionals who use public safety telecommunications to quickly respond to emergency calls. And whereas emergency responders rely on their knowledge and professionalism to make critical decisions, obtain information, and quickly dispatch needed aid. Public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety telecommunications at the Jackson County 911 Center have assisted with the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. The work of these, quote, unforeseen first responders is invaluable in emergency situations, and each of these dedicated men and women deserve our heartfelt appreciation. Citizens place their trust in these individuals, not just this week, but every day of the year. And whereas each telecommunicator exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job assisting those in need. Therefore, in recognition of the men and women of the Jackson County 911 Dispatch Center, whose diligence and professionalism keep our county citizens safe. The Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2022, as 911 Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Jackson County, Florida.
Do we have any of our dispatchers here?
Yes, we have.
Would they come forward?
Somebody's going to be manning the home. If not, we just take a break for a while.
Thank y'all. You all do a great job. We appreciate all your hard work. I know you're stuck out there and you probably think we don't know you're there, but we do, and we appreciate all our things.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt the proclamation and authorize the chairman to sign.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fakes, second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Did he, did he come in? Byron, come on in. You're late, but we'll, we'll put you in.
But I'll be real brief. In July of 2019, the Board of County Commissioners approved May 20th as a proclamation as Emancipation Day in Jackson County. This year for the Emancipation Day Festival, we schedule for June 11th through 12th. We're planning a parade and a barbecue cook-off and best cake competition. At that festival, I am requesting your presence to formally acknowledge you for what you did, for the unanimous vote to approve May 20th proclamation. At the Emancipation Day Festival, that ceremony will be here on Sunday, June 12th. I would also like to invite each of the commissioners and even the staff and everybody involved. If they would like to be a judge for the best barbecue, barbecue reel competition or the best cake competition as well. So I wanted to extend that and graciously ask your presence so that we can formally, definitely for those that attended. And to also, you know, this is what the board approved, and I want to acknowledge you for what you've done.
Oh, is this informational?
Yes.
I got a couple of questions. You're talking about two egg, all those gas cars, all that heavy traffic. Where are you doing your parade?
It's gonna, it's gonna be right on Winter Green Road, keeping it simple. The south end where the entrance of the two egg, farm for two egg, and then on the end right there at the intersection of Love Dale and Water Green. But I, right now, I've just reached out to Roden Bridge, the sheriff, and the fire chief. Just to make sure we have a good working order, good safety mechanism in place for this parade. Keeping it real simple.
What time on?
June 11th or June 12th?
June 12th would be what we're doing the actual ceremonial presentation. We're also going to have to request in the school board as well because they actually approved Freedom Month. Where all the schools in Jackson County would expand and enrich upon the holidays of Armed Forces Day, Memorial Day, and Emancipation Day.
What time of day are you doing your ceremony?
Uh, we'll start, we'll kick off at 11:00, but I'm planning to do that ceremony about 1:00 o'clock right before we, the real cook-off begins.
What time do you need Clint there to start tasting cake?
I'm gonna need him, hey, I need him to judge. The judging will be at 3:00. So I'm trying to get all the church folks to come in and 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 be able to taste it. So the judging will be at 3:00. And I, it's, it's gonna be competitive. I'll tell you that. I'm already getting demands for, you know, the judging competition, of course, and so.
We let him judge. We just want some.
Yeah, yeah. I got, I'm diabetic, right?
Sunday, right?
Yes.
Reason I said, because Commissioner Peacock and myself had a meeting that weekend in Orlando. I think I mentioned that to you, but, but we can make it.
No, it's Jacksonville.
Oh, it's in Jacksonville.
That's too obvious.
Same thing.
Yeah, you can make it for some good.
We'll be tired.
We'll let them know, we'll let them know what.
Either way, either way, we have, there you go. There you got some delegates. Got some delegates.
Work as a judge too.
There you go.
I should be back on Sunday.
Tuesday, Tuesday. I appreciate you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Byron.
Thank you. Thank you, sweetie.
Okay, at this time, I think we have Julie.
Dennis.
Dennis on Zoom or where have we got her? Fred, do you have Julie?
He's on.
Hello?
Julie's going to give us a briefing on the CDVG DR.
This is the MIT program? And Hunter, I don't know if you had any intentions or were you letting Julie handle? Okay, Julie's gonna give y'all a briefing on it.
4:27. She's just gonna tell us what we're gonna apply for.
Fantastic. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. Well, so great to see all of you again. Thank you commissioners for letting me come and give a quick presentation. On the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program and and next steps related to this. So a quick overview of the funding. This is the last known round of funding for the CDVG program that's specific to Hurricane Michael. So we have gone through some other grant applications up to this date that were CDVG DR disaster recovery. This one is CDVG mitigation or CDVG MIT is what they call it. So this program is a little bit more forward thinking in that projects do not have to be directly tied to Hurricane Michael damage. And are intended to mitigate risk to future disasters, kind of similar to other mitigation programs, disaster mitigation programs that are out there. There's a total of 42.2 million available to the Hurricane Michael impacted counties listed here on the slide. And project awards can be anywhere. The minimum is 500,000 and it can go all the way up to the, to the entire award amount. So a lot of flexibility there. The application cycle is currently open and we are, we are working on pulling together those applications now and they will be due on June 10th. The max number of applications that a community can submit would be five. So we, and so we want to walk you through the eligible activities here. I'm not going to read these off because it's, it's quite a long list, but I do want to highlight a few that I think will be in line with some of the recommendations that we have today. So this is largely an infrastructure-based application cycle. And so you'll see a lot of different infrastructure projects. You'll see that we can fortify buildings that are essentials to the health, safety, and welfare of a community, which can include shelters or police stations. We can also rehab or construct new stormwater management systems. We can improve drainage facilities and make road repairs. So if there are areas of flooding, we can address those as well. Outside of infrastructure applications, there are some potential, you can also look at improvements to warning and evacuation systems. You can do mitigation planning work. You can also do public awareness and education campaigns. So we're back talking about low to moderate income areas. And so I've got a map up here and I believe this was included in your board package as well. Which shows you the different census blocks in Jackson County. And if it's got a blue dot in it, that means that it is an LMI area for Jackson County. So for the CDVG MIT application cycle, it is not required that you have, that your property or that your project address LMI. However, the largest number of point allocations is allocated is given to those projects that do address those low to moderate income areas. So to create a competitive application, especially with all of the cities and all of the counties that will be applying for the. So, to create a competitive application, especially with all of the cities and all of the counties that will be applying for the four million dollars, that'll, that'll go quickly in this area, it's important that, to remain competitive, that we look at those areas. So, this is, this is a quick summary of what those are. So, today, I want to make a recommendation based on conversations that we've had with staff to date about different project ideas. We, we'd like to recommend two projects, submitting two applications, the first would be the Endeavor Gymnasium and the Shelter Project, so it'll be our third time going to DEA, DEO for this grant application, and we're hoping that this one will be the, the one that they fund, and so we're gonna work hard to, to, to get that out there and, and make sure they see that this is a priority for Jackson County, so that is project number one. And the application for project number two would be the Pusa Road improvements to improve some of the flooding issues that you will have there. So, next steps on this would be to begin the application process, there will be public hearings or public noticing requirements as part of this, and working closely with David Melvin Associates and his team to put together competitive projects on behalf of Jackson County.
Questions, Julie, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, stand by. Questions from the board?
I guess my question, and I understand that we're a little bit restricted in our projects that we can apply for, since we're trying to find projects within the LMI areas, but is there any advantage or disadvantage to putting in less than the five applications? Is there any advantage to putting in five?
So, I think if we, if we put in five applications, we'll be, we, I mean, we could do that, we would be competing kind of against ourselves in that, and so, you know, we could go that route, my recommendation would be that these two seem to be the best fit, that, that I've heard of to date for, for the application and for the grant priorities, but if there are others to consider, I think, I think we should definitely consider those as well.
Um, David, you may want to come up, I have a question on this Pusa Road. She said drainage, is that including paving?
Yeah, I think the intent is a hundred percent of the paving.
To do all of it.
Right, right.
Except the mitigation part at the end with the drainage problem.
Right.
So, we all agree on that? Now, what about putting in for a hardened shelter of some sort, or the dispatcher out at the sheriff's department? I can think of two more projects I would like to see added, and Redd, you may have one on the lift station.
Julie can speak to the bunker, it was actually on the original list, Julie, you want to speak to that one that we talked about?
Sure, we looked at the bunker project, and that, that meets the requirements and would be great, the problem is, it is outside of an LMI area, so it's not going to be as competitive as the two that we're pushing, that we, we have in front of you.
Well, it serves an LMI area, all of the LMI areas are served out of that, it may not physically sit in it, but it affects every LMI.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I, David, if you have any ideas on how we might, might make that better fit, I, I think it's, I, I do believe that it's a, it's a good project, it's just that LMI criteria does put some limitations on us.
Yeah, and kind of like what we were saying, strategically wise, if you turn in a, you know, a five or six million dollar project, five, six million dollar project, you turn in a one million dollar project, you, you run a risk that they'll go, okay, we'll find the one million dollar project, and so there's, there's a strategy on what you turn in, kind of like Julie was saying, that you're competing against yourself sometimes, if you, you give them low hanging fruit, they'll, they'll take that one and.
Well, that's kind of what happened on the first round of DR with the jail, though we needed that, but it was an easy win to, for them to take.
So, so the applications one and two that is part of the recommendation, the Pusa Road improvement, what, what is that cost for that project possibly?
We done the cost estimate, I don't remember.
Three to four million dollars.
Three, three million, you know?
Another project I think we need to look at is upgrading the communications for sheriff's department and the first responders. And there again, it covers the whole county. Communications go down, you're finished, all this other stuff is irrelevant.
I agree, it goes back to that LMI, because they don't necessarily look at it the way that.
I wouldn't.
I agree, that's a common sense approach, but we've kind of gone down that route of, well, it serves everyone, but the total LMI of the county, that doesn't help our case, they want to see you serve a specific area.
You will be serving. I guarantee you, you call Charlie Burner, LMI, he's going, and he's, he's gonna get that call off of that tower.
Yeah, I'll tell, there may be potential for rolling in the safe room, the communications, and all those things into one application in that, and, and putting it there, and just think, you know, if you got three or four million dollar applications, you want your other application to be in the three or four million dollars, because the way I say, you, you want to be at the end of the day, if they awarded one of those, you want to be happy that they awarded the one they've got, and you don't want to be, oh, you got a, a five hundred thousand dollar application, but they didn't award the four million, so if you roll those elements in, which I think you may be able to, the, the safe room and all that as far as, and put all that into one application in this, three or four million dollars, then you got three, three or four million dollar projects, and if they pick one of those three, you know, you'd, you'd, you'd be happy, that may be a.
It looks to me like communications is one of the major components that they're pushing at this, and we, we know from experience, you need that communication hardened, and you need, we need more communication service in Jackson County already, so.
That's what I'm saying, I, I, if I'm understanding that the safe room that you're talking about for that is kind of connected with the communication.
It is.
And so that, and it's, and, and that becomes a Jackson County wide, they call it community-wide need for the whole, it hurts you on the LMI on it, but it's a bigger area that, so we may be able to put all that together into an application that gets us in that three or four million dollar, you know, we, we grew deep some good things.
Go ahead.
David, on this chart, it shows the LMI locations, that obviously they got three different sized dots, is that dot just represents that part of the zone, because I remember looking at LMI for different things, for feeding and all that, if they had larger areas, just, is that?
No, it's, it's a, there, there's a whole census.
Right, right, I understand, usually that's red in the papers, like Eric Davis has.
Yeah, and so, kind of, you take half of the west half of Mariana, Graceville, all that kind of area is, is a good LMI area, that Pusa Road, all that falls into a good LMI area, as we always know, Grand Ridge does not fall in LMI area, Sneed's doesn't actually fall into an LMI area based on the, the latest census.
So, my question is. Is this based on the latest census?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, David, so if we go with this, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of curious why they didn't choose our previous application two times, is there a reason on that specific application we would deny twice for?
We're working on that.
Okay, I just didn't know, if we throw it out there a third time, if the first two swings wasn't correct, and what, what was the deal, was there something in that like?
They kind of said all along, oh, that's a mitigation project, that's some of the, because they see it as a storm shelter, and that's a, a real key of this mitigation is how you provide safety and, and those kind of shelters, and the previous was infrastructure, and, you know, we felt like it fit, fit that need for infrastructure, but they kind of kicked the can down the road and say, no, that's a mitigation project, so it's, you know, we hope it's pretty prime for this application cycle. But like I say, I think, and Julie may add some to this, but I think there's potential for putting together those three applications, if you want to, one that rolls your communication, safe room, all of that in together, and, and we'll make sure that we cover, because you, you can do a lot of things with the money, I just try to shoot to get it up in the three or four million dollar range, so all three of the applications are, there's not a low hanging fruit one that they'll pick and, and go with that, you'll, you'll be happy if you get any of them.
Okay, all right.
When will the, the applications are in June?
June 10th.
When will they be awarded?
Well, who knows?
I know, but there's no deadline?
Yeah, but, but they're, they're turning them around, the, the history on the other ones has been about three or four months after they're turned in, on it, and Julie, Julie may add some clarification and.
They've been turned out even a little quicker than that, on, well, at least the notification, you're getting a site visit, which is a good.
You kind of find out, actually, so, actually, you find out after about three weeks.
If you're getting a site visit.
You get a site visit, they're, they're not, they're not awarded to the governor, makes an announcement that they're awarded, but after about three weeks, you have a pretty good feel for whether you're finding out.
I mean, the gym was our first thing that the board picked to fix, and then we added shelter, and now we're, what? A year and a half, two, three, I don't know how many years down the road.
Yeah.
So.
The, the, the R1, the R1s were about a year ago, and they're just, all the, which is what your jail got funded in, and, and those contracts and all are in place and everything, the DR2, we call it, round two, those, they've done site visits on and all like that, and they're just starting to do contracts on those. So, yeah, no, I, I think, like Willam was saying, from June 10th, probably first of July, you'll have a good idea if you're funded or not in this, in this cycle, yeah. But this, this is one that they've always told us the gym shelter fit for, they consider it, you know, as opposed to water and sewer and stormwater, and that's what we were competing against, in fact, the last time we submitted the gym, we threw in some stormwater aspects out at Endeavor to, to hopefully boost it a little bit more on that, but, but this, the gym shelter is fit for mitigation, that's why they.
Will the grant pay for the renovations that we're wanting to do?
Yes.
All of it?
All of it.
Would the, the two applications before been probably, okay, we added shelter to it, but would they have funded the, the project without the shelter and them other things?
No, it, it would have decreased in points, you'd fund it anyway, but it would, you would have taken, there, there were 10 or 15 points went in there for a shelter on it, and so that's the reason that we, one, there's a need for it, and there's, for the shelter.
We know we got a need.
But, but even more so, even more so with this mitigation, this mitigation focuses a lot more on shelters, and doing that.
Mr. Donifero?
For clarification, I think what I'm hearing is that we would like to add that third project to this list, but I'm still curious as to how you, the, the safe room construction is roughly about nine hundred thousand dollars, in order to keep that from being low hanging fruit, you know, how do you get that up to a three to four million dollar?
I don't know how much the communication.
Communication. What are we looking? Lieutenant Passford, I know your communi, your towers, y'all need towers put up, you need.
We got the towers, we need, we need, you know, equipment on those towers, but we have access to those.
Some.
Some, the, the, obviously, like you've already said, communication is a major issue, I think that, that bunker, that safe room for our dispatchers, they would ride out of storm and still do their job effectively, I think, I assume it's gonna be pretty pricey, and then the radio equipment technology possible, having to have generators on some of these power sites, another Round Lake Tower, I don't believe has a, has a generator.
No, we, we can work on the specifics, but I think you.
Well, and as you're correct too, Paul, I, we can do with this, you can do any other improvements at, at the sheriff's office that, that you didn't get to do with the original funding, so it doesn't just have to be, it can be, once you go to touch, touching the building and building that safe room there, you can do, just like with the gym, we can do anything we want to there, you can do, so we can expand the scope if there are additional needs.
We only got a quote from, you know, MCA on the tower for them, UHF and VHS and, and Round Lakeside and also Northeast, so we've already got those as current, they're less than 60 a day, or maybe even shorter.
My ballpark, they.
Just 300,000 shy.
But.
I tell you also, he's speaking on that, and, you know, doing some other things, and I know the sheriff has talked to some of y'all in the vision about, when we move back to our original location, evidence storage is a major issue, you know, where we're at, we got plenty of stores, but, the, we, we look to be an accredited agency within the next year and a half, and that evidence storage is one of the main things that the, when we wrap it all up, this wide our evidence storage, semi-trailer.
David, would you get with the, are you doing the grant?
I'm working with Julie and Hunter.
Y'all get together with the sheriff's department and.
Yeah, we will.
Do not only think of Round Lake, we may have to put up a tower somewhere in this county to give adequate coverage, that's what we need, adequate coverage.
Need a complete networking system, you know, completely linked.
Yeah, that's what we need to be looking at. And you'll be surprised how fast it'll go up.
So, it doesn't take y'all long to spend money?
With you standing at the podium.
Julie, if you would, get with the sheriff and everyone and work out some details, and then let us know what you come up with before you submit it.
When's, when's the deadline again?
Yes, sir.
June 10th, so we got some time.
Yeah, 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 we'll probably come back to the.
Next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah, because it, your first meeting in June won't make what they is.
Well, we have the last meeting in April, and then we have May, but we should come to the next meeting, so we have all of May.
Next, yeah. All right, we better get. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Moving to the consent agenda items, everyone's got a copy of the agenda, they've read through it, any questions?
There's a motion that the consent agenda be approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Donna Froh, second by Commissioner Pake, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries five zero. Mr. Grady Snail.
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioner, my name is First Sergeant Lieutenant Grady Snail Jr., I'm the great grandson of Sheriff Carter, the late Reverend Samuel Peters. I'm also presently the president and CEO of Gilmore Academy Youth Club, which was established the 15th of November, 2016, and is located out there on, where I just at, at Old Mayland Middle School. We requested the gym and the Wilson and Pittman Building, we refer to it as, which consists about four classrooms, and what we're going to do was, was, was preserve history, and at the same time, establish an after-school youth development program. And I was listening, looking at once, the, the young man was talking about the money, he came out a hundred and probably two million, I said, man, we don't need but a few thousand. But our mission statement, our mission statement, and what I got to do here is, I got to introduce myself so you know who I, who we are.
That money he's talking about?
Yeah.
When it comes, if, if it comes, it's got to be spent on certain things.
Right, 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 I know.
Things they designate.
I understand, I understand, but our mission statement was to establish an after-school development center, provide charity and educational recreation activity to the low, moderate, income, and underprivileged children while preserving history in Jackson County, Florida. Our intent is to help motivate, educate, low-income and underprivileged children on how to become successful in school, society's workforce, and I will go. society's workforce, and our goal is to develop working, law-abiding, productive citizens in Jackson County, the state of Florida, and throughout the United States of America. Now, at this time, uh, my, my, my coach, Coach Clay, uh, he's the, the, uh, operation director at the youth development center, he'll pass out the package to you, and I'm not gonna read it word for word, I'm gonna just hit the top, because I gotta establish who I am so I can have some credibility, uh, with the county. And they're, they're in, in parts, in the top right-hand corner, you'll see a little writing that says like part one, and we just hit the mission statement. Now, as we go through part one, uh, you'll see where we are registered, uh, with the state of Florida, and you turn to the next page, you'll see the, uh, the offices and that we are a nonprofit corporation in the state of Florida, and then down where it say on the second page documented images, it'll show you that we're in good standards, we've been filing our report and everything annually every year. And on the next page, uh, you'll notice I just highlighted a couple of things, keywords like that exempt and five oh one C three. All right. And on the fa, final page, you know, you have small donors and you have large donors. For the big, big donors, uh, this is a official contribution, uh, receipt where they can use to file with the government to, uh, give their money back, give some of the money back. Okay, and on part two, it's kind of, uh, small, but just to let you know, we're not running around with our hand out and not trying to do something for ourselves. Uh, it's our monthly financial statement, and this is from last month. And we do have donations, uh, coming in, and we have been paying our bills, as you can see on there, we paid our last installment on the insurance. Now, on number three, is what we are asking you all to do, is please help us save a child. And by helping us establish a youth development center in the old JCTS and Mary Ann Middle School located on forty-one, forty-four South Street, we'll do that. The purpose of establishing is to provide equal opportunity on an after-school program for the underprivileged children and preserve the history of Gilmore Academy and JCTS. Now, a little history, I'm not gonna go into all of it, but I, 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 I do that first paragraph, and I don't intend to insult anyone's intelligence by reading it to you, but we do have an audience here, they don't have a copy, so that read it, they can also hear it too. Uh, history, Gilmore Academy was the first school with the first through twelfth grade established in Jackson County for black Americans and was founded by Mr. Robert T. Gilmore. And Mr. Gilmore, he made some, some, uh, sacrifices in doing this, he did, uh, he donated the land, um, and then he, he, he did kind of like what we're doing now, we're, we're going around and asking for donations and help and things like that to establish a youth development center on the west end of Mary Ann. Well, a hundred years ago, that's the same thing Mr. Gilmore was doing, but he was doing it to establish a high school, a school from the first to the twelfth grade. And while we are doing that, well, after he got it, uh, built and everything, what he did was donate the three acres of land and the facility to the school board, Jackson County Board of School, the, uh, school board, and the reason they did that, and out for it to be accredited diploma that was respected where it arrived, it had to be accredited, and then, so that's why he had to donate it to, uh, the school board for Jackson County. And therefore, we're asking you to help the youth in Jackson County community and honor the educational efforts that Professor Robert T. Gilmore put forward to make this, uh, establishment.
Grady, are you asking for a specific dollar amount, or it looks like you've got a fundraising goal of seventy-five thousand dollars, you've got fifteen thousand dollars raised thus far?
Oh, yes, sir.
And, and are you asking us for a specific amount?
Well.
Or just whatever we feel like?
Whatever, whatever y'all figure, on the, on the back page.
And this is to be used for, uh, uh, you said, of course, I'm familiar with the, the gymnasium, it's got a stage there on the east side.
Right.
This specifically to rehab that stage?
Yes, sir.
Prove, uh, prove the stage for uses, uh, as a stage?
As a stage where we can have, uh, we can have plays, we can have, uh, concerts, we can have gospel concerts come in and use it as a, as a stadium, and the covering for the flow, it costs about ten thousand dollars. Now, ten thousand dollars, that goes with the covering, the roller and the handle that, uh, uh, rolls it up, they all come separately. But that's what we want to do with.
Let me, let me ask you this, would you be, of course, you know, we're, we're in the year, budget year already, I know our contingency dollars, which is where I assume these dollars will have to come from more than likely.
I think we need to find out, is this a recurring or non-recurring request?
Non-recurring.
A non-recurring.
And I, I guess, would you be opposed to coming, actually, I think we need to take this up during our budget process, because we really don't have contingency dollars to, to handle it this year, but we could certainly discuss.
When, when are you starting your project, sir?
When, when did we start it?
We, we, I, I mean, the renovation aspect that you're asking for today, what, what part of plan, are you waiting to get your goal seventy-five thousand? Are you doing it incrementally in stages?
We, we're doing it incrementally in stages, right now, if you look at the, the little list that we got down, got down there, like the security, uh, the COVID screening station equipment, we already got that. Okay, uh, classroom supplies, we got some of those, but we, we're going through some of the surplus computers that they left out there and see what we can salvage out of that, and hopefully we can get with the school and try to get some of their software after they have surplus, the intent is to have it when they have an after-school program and doing the tutoring, what they look at in school on the computer screen, we want to be looking at the same thing, uh, during the tutoring process to bring them up to speed, because you know, some, some people just slower than us. And, uh, the, the orange paint and black restoring, we, 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 we got that, um, on the control, you know, we, we, we're doing well on that. Uh, now, the renovation of the, the stage, that's, that's a pretty heavy dollar, but we, we're working toward it, and transportation. Now, when we say transportation, we're not expecting a new vehicle or, or nothing like that, but we know sometimes it's, the county, it's when a vehicle, a bus gets a certain amount of miles on it, they'll put it in surplus, even the bus still be in good shape, and that'll work good for us, and we're not just asking you to just give it to us, we asking you to provide us the opportunity to purchase from you.
If you're talking to the school board about that, that would be a good mechanism when your transportation, I think the school board, right, would help you more than we do, I mean, I don't know of any.
They have more buses.
Buses and stuff that accommodate you, so I would definitely reach out to the school board on, on the bus, that's on your transportation, because of their fleet that they have installed.
Yeah.
There may be some that they deliver the liquidate and move on.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I get on the agenda when, uh, for their next, try for their next meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Faith?
Well, you give us a list of how you, of the money you've raised so far, what is your, you know, you're, I know you're asking us, um, but what is your intentions to raise the rest of the money?
Well, what, what we're doing, we got, we got, uh, packages there, now, also, we, we.
Okay, donations from, yeah, okay, I got you.
Okay, donations and, and the other, the other means we're looking at, as we move forward and get things operational, we already established a standard operation procedure, because some of the facilities, we can, we can rent it out at a discount, very affordable rate, and that's another way we're planning on bringing in revenue, you know, pay our bills and do fundraising too, for example, we just signed on our first, uh, uh, AA, AAU support team, you know, and he compared our rates to the other school rates, he was like, man, y'all are really working with us, that's our intent. You know, we're not trying to get rich off of that thing, but we would just want to provide the opportunity, I, I hope that, that kind of.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, I want to kind of know, kind of what your plan is, let me ask you, there's money to renovate, how you gonna operate and all that, so that.
That's, that's, that's the intent, and see, once we renovate the, the stage and once we get the flow for the, the, the covering, then our marketing can, can go up for us raising money.
Have you been to the school board and done the same thing, asked them for money?
Not, not yet, I went to the school board when we was, uh, working to, to get the project, when we were working the, to get the project, and I, I, I like to try not to leave no doubt when I be feeling, so I just brought a, a copy of the, the, the piece, the page fourteen, just to show you there, we did sign it, but I don't want to be saying where I want to be when we sign the piece.
But then I just.
But I went to the school board when they had the property, you know, they were back and forth with the property for a while, so I, I went before the school board and asked them to support the city and giving them that five acres of the gym and the Wilson and Pittman Building, so they can give it to us, that's the only time I went before.
And you, uh, you mentioned, uh, for the county, you're doing this for the county, how are you gonna recruit or get people from, you know, outside of Marianna?
Oh, we, we, we have open gyms, uh, on, on Saturday, we didn't have it on Sunday, but we switched to Saturday, uh, so coaching and directors brought up a point, they said, well, if we do it on Sunday, that the church board don't have the opportunity to go, so we switched. But the answer to your question about getting people outside, we have people from Chipley, from, from, I come and just sit open gym back, uh, Chipley, uh, Greenwood, Malone, Chattahoochee, Snee, because.
Uh, the reason I asked, I mean, we are the county commission, so.
Right.
Some would say, well, that's a Marianna thing, and, uh, so that's why I asked.
This town, and they, and they've been showing up, you know, this documented, uh, when we have them, when they come in, you know, they're coming to the gym and go pick up the ball, you know, you got a, a, a intake system you go through, where you read the rules first. That way, if you don't want to pull your pants up, and, and you don't want to stop cursing, and you just going back, you don't, you don't even have to come in, all right? And once we process.
Who releases it?
We do.
You do? As a first sergeant, you take care of the house.
You got Mr. Clayton back in, whether they're gonna.
We have on the, our uniform is the, the referee shirt and black paint, so automatically that gives authority right there on, on the spot.
Mr. Snell, would you be, would you be, of course, again, I don't think we're going to be prepared to do anything today as far as making a decision, would you be opposed to coming back during the budget hearing and let us hear a little bit more about the program, because I've, I've heard it a number of times, you've got a lot of good things going out there, and I think it's a certainly a very, uh, good project, we can do a lot of good things, but I, I, we got a lot on the agenda in front of us, and I think we could probably take a little bit more time during the budget and, and could really make a decision during the budget if we could discuss this during.
We'll be talking, doing budget in July, so.
So probably, probably sometime in June, just preparing, I'd like to see a dollar thinking that, I mean, I understand that you're at, uh.
Well, he's got.
Yeah, I know, I know the number you've got.
Different levels.
Different level, yeah, I kind of like that, but no, uh, but, but seriously, what, what golden amount would you have for us? We're probably by between now and two, three months, you may have another, uh, amount that you may want or less, or whatever, you may successfully hopefully get your goal, but just let us know, I kind of like a little bit.
Okay, so this is a jumpstart.
Sure, you're right.
And Mr. Snell, like, uh, Mr. Donifor said, you know, you have a good thing going here, you will hear from me personally, on a personal level, as a business leader, you will hear from me.
Thank you, sir.
Um, in looking through your packet, you do know that you're required to register with the Department of Agriculture to solicit funds as a nonprofit. You're not supposed to solicit until you register, you can do it on the computer, but I would highly recommend if you haven't done it, do it, get it done. Just go to the Florida Department of Agriculture and, uh, do it online. So you will, you will have to, need to do that before we can contribute.
No problem, business, no.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your service to our country and thank you for your service to our community, and we look forward to working with you, so. Uh, Ms. Daniels, unfortunately she stepped out, we'll be back in contact with you and, uh, make sure, Carlin, would you make sure you've got his contact information, and we'll get back with you and tell you when to come in again, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cool jacket.
Take care.
Thank y'all for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Mary Carroll?
Good morning, Missures.
Good morning.
As always, I notify you at this time of year of all the county-owned certificates that are eligible to apply for tax deed and all those that are about to roll off the roll, which are seven years old, um, and all this is according to the Florida administrative rule. I've got two lists that I'm gonna mention, uh, the first one is gonna consist of certificates that's issued two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty. Um, it's large, and I didn't print it, I, I printed the state prescribed format for myself so that I can have some numbers to give you and account, but we can make the list more as you would like to see it, um, with four years or of certificates, you may want to see if they're consecutive in their delinquency, you know, rather than have an each-year individual, you can just see the pileup of individuals', uh, delinquencies. But, um, under the Florida statute one ninety-seven, it states that the county which the property described shall apply for a tax deed on all county health certificates on property valued at five thousand dollars or more on the property appraiser's most recent assessment roll, well, their, my state prescribed report is the assessment on that year of delinquency, so it would have to take some homework to get the possible number and bring it up to look at what the current assessment is to know if it's five thousand or more, and that you may apply on certificates less than five thousand. That was the first list, just those that are eligible, but the last list are those that are about to roll off, they're seven years old, and they will roll off on May twenty-ninth of this year, uh, there are four hundred and two properties, and the total of those, including interest and the cert, face amount of the certificate is two hundred thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars and six cents. Now, the interest is more than the certificates were, now, when county certificates are issued, it's eighteen percent. So the interest is a hundred and nine thousand, where the certificates was only ninety, so that, that figure of two hundred and, two hundred thousand includes the interest. But according to the statute, if the deed is not applied for by that date, May twenty-ninth, those certificates will become null and void. With the market, I know this is something that we've not ever done before, we've discussed it multiple times, but with the market as it is, people are looking for something. And I may just want to suggest, just look at the list, let's create a list and see what we may want to offer, and to be a win-win, we would get somebody to purchase it, not for the county to, for it not to go for sale, but for somebody to acquire a piece of.
Okay, what was the number of, uh, properties available?
How many?
Number of properties coming up?
Okay, the one that's gonna roll off is four hundred and two, now, the majority of those are Conference Lake.
You're saying majority, over half?
I would say, probably. And just in me running down, just glancing through the list, the assessed value on the delinquent, the two thousand and fifteens roll, they were mostly lower than five thousand.
I believe there's somewhere around two hundred and five, six of them, it's Conference Lake, and I think their value somewhere is net thousand fifty, maybe, but Michelle, you can speak to this, I think the county didn't have. I think the county then has to pay, uh, for title search and all that, which makes it even more. So we've talked several times as board, including I think with McKinney and Donoflu who's been here, that, uh, you know, firefighters, emergency personnel, deputies, policemen, we would literally turn that over to them. You know, if they go to home or something, we've talked about that many times. And it's a, it's a good time. I believe we've kind of getting toward the top that good time. It might be shifting, and it somewhat has also with inflation, but we need to look at that. Uh, so is there, I'm assuming that two hundred and five or six, I remember from several years ago was, it's a track from the four oh two. What's, where's the majority of that? Just folks on, barn, it's all over the place. There's not a defined area that has more, maybe contiguous property?
Looked at it on a map.
I know, I, I had Rebecca, uh, here a while back print me out another, a list of paper, uh, of a list of Compass Lake. Cause there was, there was some people outside the county was looking for some property for business in that area. We was looking at contingency, I mean contiguous property that they make a bill, obviously a lot wasn't big enough for them. But it is, you know, so sporadic out there, but it is a good time though, if we can find people having that. I still confuse why don't come to the meetings and sell them at the tax deed. I mean, I mean, they can walk in the Clay's office anytime, I'm correct, and you keep those in your vault, uh, the certificates. The certificates of them are in your vault or the, or in your vault, your vault. And it can, or go.
Computer.
Computer, right. And they can, they can ask to buy that at any point, even though they're off the roll, correct?
Yeah, we sell, once we hold a certificate sale, which is always June first and it's an online sale, the, the bidders, once they bid on what they want, then we can sell to anybody else. From the county can sell their certificate to fifteen percent to somebody else. So a lot of, a lot that don't go online at the sale will be over the counter and from our office to other people who want the certificate. But now holding the certificate is just a means of investment for most. For most people, it's an investment.
And I think, and I think again, the conversation we have, trying to find people to buy those. And I, I think Wendy did a really good job from community development of, uh, bringing down kind of numbers of wherever we was at. Some places in Compass Lake, it's two and three miles to the closest power line. And that don't mean, don't really know that until you do the, the due diligence on that. So if you buy a, said a lot out there and you find out that it's somewhere around eight dollars a linear foot, you got to pay to run that from the closest, you know, electrical service to your land. And you're talking tens of thousands of dollars just to get you a power line. And I think that was complexity out there a lot, the reason why they weren't selling that. So maybe we can work with local electric companies or whatever, try to.
Is it West Florida Electric down there?
Yeah, West Florida's down there.
You want a list? I can send the list, I can send our state prescribed format. You could just see each year individually or we can create something else.
Same one.
This is one list, right? You got more?
Well, the first list I spoke about has, I don't know if I even gave you those numbers. There's two thousand five hundred and thirty-five certificates. And the total of that with interest through April comes to five hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents.
The big thing is the money. Is the money to come up with, because we'd have to weigh the whole thing, right? Plus.
Well, when, when county applies, and like I say, this would be new to us. When county applies, you pay the, the tax collector fee, seventy-five dollars, our title search fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, so two twenty-five is what we would collect. You don't have to pay all the outstanding certificates like individual certificate holders would have to pay. They have to pay everybody up, but you don't. Until it goes for sale in Clay's office, he'll hand, he has his fees too. And advertising and shares fees and he can tell you about all, what he does. But it's the process.
Let's get a list and a map. And perhaps get an overlay of the power supply out there. And, uh, maybe we can look at doing something with some of the ones where we wouldn't have to spend a cycle of money to get power to them. Uh, because if we can take these lots and give, or not give them, but sell them to, uh, a teacher, you know, the teacher allows for somebody.
You might think they're not, they're not going to be the property, would you? I would.
Well, yeah.
Just for that.
But we get them and, you know, we can require them to bring us a pre-approved, uh, application from the bank. And we set the number, whatever the house has to be worth, and they have to build it for the next number of, amount of time, you know, two years or whatever. We would win. This is where we're, we got to do something. We're losing too much money on this. I mean, this, you know, this is like having a jail with no door. People aren't paying. We got to do something with those people.
And a lot, I'm just going to add this, a lot of these delinquencies are ditches. There's ditches that's been assessed, you know, it's been left off of illegal. And the only way to clean that up is to have somebody correct it through a deed recording to, to. I know somebody personally that when they sold their piece of property, whoever prepared the deed left a little footage in between houses. Well, the seller's not going to pay that, not on the buyer's deed. So there's a little strip that's going to be delinquent every year until somebody does some legwork and cleans up some deeds. So that's just a lot of what's out there. And there's reasons most of the time that people don't pay their taxes. A lot of air property, nobody wants to pay.
Well, we need to come up with a way because this is, it's not nickel dimes anymore. Now, this is real money and the county is going to be hurting this year, uh, at budget time. So I think, uh, we need to be good stewards of the money and, uh, come up with some plan to rectify this problem. And I've talked about it and even before I got on the board, I was talking about, we need to fix it, so.
So are you want to focus on those that are going to roll off those two thousand fifteen years for, for starters?
Yes, definitely the ones that rolling off.
Y'all agree?
Okay.
Otherwise it becomes almost too much.
Okay.
We don't want to be competing with.
Want to just send it to Bridget and let her disperse it to everybody or to Willam?
Correct. She'll take care of it.
Willam.
Hey, what's your fees?
Um, we get a deposit and then it's just the actual cost. Because like the air problem, we have to notify each one of those airs. We have to advertise, but we also have to notify with certified mail. So if there's twenty-five that we have to send certified mail to, so it's different. So we require, um, I think it's now a seven hundred and fifty dollar deposit to make sure that we get our money back. I think it's a sixty dollar fee. It is our fee, but sixty dollars is not that much, but, uh, other costs, the advertising, make sure that, you know, everybody's notified adequately, uh, certified mail.
Share.
Most cases, share.
You know.
Didn't the legislature just pass something about advertising? You're no longer required to advertise in a newspaper.
Mm-mm.
Legal.
No.
It's out there. It's out there, I'm telling you, it's, it's in.
I hadn't seen it, I, I haven't seen.
I read it, uh.
It may be just electronically, but it still has to be advertised.
You can advertise by posting it on your website and electronically. I can't imagine that the newspapers that scream, but I, I think it just.
Okay, I'll get Willam, I'll get you a report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mary Carroll.
So Clay, just real quick, Chairman, uh, so Clay, if y'all had to do research on, say, we'd snap a hundred out of the twenty-five hundred, we snapped a hundred, you could give us a roughly cost analysis on how much?
Well, and what you got to look at and what she was saying, I was doing a little fast numbering, but she said she had four hundred and two and it was two hundred thousand dollars worth of property items. So you're talking about five hundred dollars per. I mean, I, I think what we did last time when, I think we had a meeting with the tax collector and everybody, it was going to roughly cost about a thousand dollars. It's what you could figure that you were going to have in each piece of property to apply for the tax deed. It is roughly.
That'd be reoccurring though, if we don't sell within that year, correct?
You said a thousand dollars.
No, no, that, that, that would be needed once you, if it went to sale, of course it's going to sell. Whoever bought it, if nobody bought it, then you.
It's ours, that's right, that's right.
So you wouldn't get any tax revenue out of that if they didn't buy it. But you would have the property and it would not be a recurring cost.
And you're not getting taxed from it anyway.
Right. But if we instituted a program like we've discussed in the past, where certain people.
I've always been concerned about the fact that, you know, you have tens of thousands of people that buy tax deeds for eighteen percent interest. I mean, I don't know what a ten-year prime is now on a CD price of one percent, but you've got eighteen percent off of it. Why aren't they buying these? There's a reason why it's not being bought on the market, because a lot of times the, the land is not worth what the price of body is.
But here, here's a reason why we haven't, I guess. You said a thousand dollars per property. That's four hundred and two thousand dollars to get two hundred thousand dollars worth of Avroloam tax. And a lot of them are not even worth that.
Yeah, you're chasing dollars with hundreds.
Okay, Zach Gilmore.
Good morning, y'all. Been a long morning, hasn't it?
Already.
Uh, I'm just here to give a quick update, uh, our quarterly update from Jackson County Economic Development Committee. Just let y'all know what we've been up to and what we're planning on doing here in the near future. Um, so far this year has been, uh, very, very busy. Uh, when we were here in January, we were working, uh, thirty-two projects. And now that number has increased to forty-four total projects and twenty leads. So we're working, and, and that number of projects actually jumped to over fifty at one point. Um, and we, you know, looked over them and found some dead projects, cleaned them out. And so we're working some pretty, pretty good projects, uh, hope, hope to create some capital investments, some jobs, et cetera, uh, within this calendar year. Um, session kept us, um, in Tallahassee consistently for the good part of January through March. Uh, our office represented Jackson County at Rural County's Day, uh, at the Capitol on January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, where we had a booth set up in the Capitol Courtyard on the twenty-seventh. Uh, we began traveling the following day and attended the trade show, meeting with companies who manufacture equipment for the, uh, HVAC industry. And then in early February, right after that, we attended the FPL Power in Florida event in Daytona Beach. Our team had the opportunity to meet and network with the FPL Economic Development Staff as well as multiple site selectors that spoke at the event. Uh, J C E D C, along with the Jackson County Chamber and Main Street Marianna, represented our community on February twenty-third through twenty-fourth in Tallahassee for Northwest Florida Days at the Capitol. Uh, we attended, uh, the FPL Northwest Florida Economics Symposium in March, uh, from the seventh through the ninth in Destin. Uh, there were multiple attendees from our community that included a couple of our board members as well. Uh, we had some fantastic guest speakers there and some valuable networking opportunities with colleagues from our region. I was able to represent our organization and community with Enterprise Florida, um, and California for a Team Florida Program Meeting with Site Consultants. And while I was in San Francisco, I stumbled on our own locally packaged Proud Source water cans, uh, which that was really cool, especially being there with other, uh, colleagues from the state, with Enterprise Florida and with those site consultants. I was able to tell the story of Proud Source coming in and, and they really liked seeing our community on those cans out there all the way across the country, so that was really cool. Uh, last week I was able to visit the Sun and Fun Aviation Expo in Lakeland to meet with multiple companies in relation to the, uh, our Marianna Municipal Airport and Project Take Flight. Then, uh, upcoming, uh, there is another Team Florida Event next week in Chicago that will host about eight to ten site selectors. Uh, after that, we will represent our community at the S E D C, which is Southern Economic Development Council, um, at their Meet the Consultants Event where we will hear from and network with around twelve to fifteen more site selectors. Uh, we will also be representing our community at the M R O, which is Maintenance Repair and Overhaul, the M R O America Show in Dallas, uh, in the coming weeks to market our local certified sites to aerospace manufacturer, manufacturers and distributors. Um, and currently we have several marketing initiatives going on, including digital ad campaigns, Team Florida social media posts through Enterprise Florida Spotlight in our community, uh, Community Spotlight in the Florida Trend Magazine's Rural Issue and a Site Selector Direct Mail Camp, Campaign.
What are you mailing? Tell them what you're mailing.
So it's really cool, uh, I wa, I wasn't going to tell them yet, but. So what's really cool is it's like, it's a box that has a, a lot of different, uh, things from our community. So when we go to these events, you know, you hear these site selectors talk about the gifts that they get in the mail all the time. And so we've talked to them multiple times, we're like, okay, what do you hate to get and what do you love to get? And pretty much it narrows down to, they get all kinds of cheesy stuff in the mail that is supposed to highlight compute, communities and stuff, but they, they say anything that comes directly from the community is something that they actually keep, hold on to and remember. But if you send them something cheesy, like, I don't know what they're called, the little kaleidoscope, uh, things, cameras, you know, that really kids use. They get those a lot, uh, with pictures of the community and all that. They said they just throw those in the trash or give them to their children. Uh, so, so we wanted to be more inventive. So we have spent, um, multiple events, talking to these site selectors and working with our marketing team in Pensacola, uh, Dunkin' McColl and working with Team Florida, uh, which is actually, uh, we're, they're funding half of this, uh, campaign. And so we are going to have a box sent to them, uh, with some county information in it, but mainly it's going to have, uh, packages of peanuts that are locally grown and packaged in Jackson County. It's going to have a, um, some Cracker Jacks, which I'll explain in just a second, and also, uh, aluminum Coke bottles. Uh, also will include our Proud Source water cans that are canned here locally. And we're going to have, um, World Series baseball signed by Jeff Mathis in there as well. Uh, and then the, the really neat part of it is we're going to have, it's pretty much a baseball Americana themed box. And so all four of our certified sites are going to be featured in this box as baseball cards. So they're going to be a baseball card with our, the photos of the certified site on one side. And on the other side, it's going to have the statistics and information about the site. So it should be really cool. Hopefully it'll be a big hit.
Just get us some business.
Yes, sir. We're working.
Any questions?
Sounds like you're, you're busy.
Very busy, very busy, which is great. But when we're home, we're trying to catch up. Any more questions?
Thank you, Zach.
All right, thank y'all for everything y'all have blessed with.
Y'all want to take about five minutes?
We're in recess for five minutes.
Yes. So the letter stated, um, on page two of our original core contract, the funding adjustment, that's just on our end, um, due to our Schedule C. That part matches our Schedule C. Your part in, um, for A two stays the same. And then the main amendment change was on attachment three, um, of the core contract. And on page five, it states the civil rights certificate and it changed to civil rights compliance and non-discrimination certificate. So you have all of those new updated forms and process.
Any questions? Mr. Page?
I move that we approve amended contract authorized chairman to sign.
Got a motion by Commissioner Page.
Signature is required on this.
Probably had to accept it.
Voter, she, voter said that he, you don't have to sign.
Okay, two seconds. Second by Commissioner Hill, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you were. Susanna Gaston.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We are requesting, uh, board approval of the merchant processing agreement with Centra first data.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Page. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Brunner.
Yes, sir. The first item I have is a request for board approval of volunteer grant match funds in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars to the town of Hamilton.
Got a motion by Commissioner McKinney. Second by Commissioner Hill, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next item is request for board approval of an agreement with Schedule Two IT Biometric Narcotics Inclusion System.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Page, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Redd.
Good morning. First thing I have for you today is a, a request to approve FDP grant agreement for Jackson Blue Springs Stormwater Project Phase Two. This will be for the parking, oh, uh, the driveway and upper portion of the park to help divert storm work coming off the hill.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Page, any questions?
Yeah, just real quickly, uh, will this involve a storm, uh, treatment facility or diverting it?
So we're gonna be using the natural leg of the land with the, uh, the way the slope is, we're gonna push it back towards Blue Springs Highway. There's a little depression there, uh, just north of the gate, the entrance of the park. Uh, so we're gonna push everything down to that bottom.
We're not having to build any type of storm.
We're not constructing or expanding any existing facility.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. You're next.
Yes, sir. So secondly, I have for you, the request for board approval of purchased playground equipment for Cypress Park.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donifro. Any questions?
Uh, of course, this price does not include, uh, installation or the, so we're gonna do that ourselves.
Well, I got the quote for installation after the deadline of last week, so it's actually an additional eight thousand dollars. But, um, we're gonna search around and try to find some money to cover that.
It doesn't include the surface treatment either, the sec-, uh, the mulch or whatever.
No mulch, no water. Um, what it'll be is just the equipment. Uh, what we've done in the past is used either sand or mulch. Uh, years ago I spoke with the, uh, lumber mill over in Cypress and they were willing to donate some mulch at that time. I'd have to readdress that with them. But, um, if we can find the money in-house to get it installed, uh, in-house staff will be able to do the border and the protective material.
So it's come out of FEMA.
So this is a, a FEMA allocated project. And the, the budget for not installation, but the budget of the equipment is under what FEMA allocated for the place.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Sir? I'm not aware, I'm not sure.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
All right, next is, uh, board approval of updated lease agreements for, uh, Corps of Engineers properties associated with Lake Seminole. So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKinney, any questions? Here none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And lastly for me is, uh, board discussion and, uh, you know, request for a heading on the Indian Springs Phase Two Water. So we did get approved for an S R F loan, um, with thirty-three percent principal forgiveness. Now, this project would do the entirety of the rest of Indian Springs, uh, what we had discussed and go ahead and put in the project out for bid. Kind of see what kind of numbers, projects, or, uh, sorry, what type of, uh, budget we get back and then kind of readdress from that.
I mean, do we expect any big deviation from the cost, I guess, that we've gotten from all the howl as far as, you know, if anything, it probably would be higher than what we anticipated.
Prices have increased significantly since the original cost estimates that were submitted with this application.
What, what costs will, will have, I mean, will we have any additional cost from an engineering standpoint to go to bid?
Uh, no, the plans are complete. Um, only thing we'll do is, you know, advertise it and they'd have to review the plans and then submit proposals and then we could decide at that time if we want.
What I propose we do is put it out for bid, let's see how they come back.
That's what, I mean, if it's anywhere close to this, you know, there's, there's no way I can support spending that much of Jackson County taxpayer money to do that.
I appreciate your opinion. You gotta vote.
You're talking about, I just don't, I, I really don't see the reason even putting it out for bid.
Well, I wanted that to go out for bid because I want to see what comes back. There's some, uh, information out there that's not correct.
It's for the plans or?
No, I think it'll come back much lower than what we've got, with this six million. I have reason to believe it'll be lower. So, uh, but this is a public service, uh, project that the Board of County Commissioners entered into several years ago. And I think it's incumbent upon us to see it through.
I, I, I can, I can tell you right now that it comes anywhere close, and it's just, I'm speaking just as one commission. If it comes anywhere close to, to being that cost, I just don't see how you can expend close to fifty thousand dollars per house to, to do that and, and put that burden.
Well, first thing you've gotta look at is the number of residents is wrong. There's a hundred and eighty-nine that will be served.
Even, even so, a lot of those, a lot of those will probably not even elect to hook up to it. A lot of people I've talked to.
I think most of them will take the water. All right. Is there a motion? All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hill to go out for bid. Second by Commissioner Page. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four to one. Commissioner Donifro dissenting. All right, we'll get on it. Okay. Uh, Jeffrey Register.
All right, how y'all doing this long?
Doing fine, sir, how are you?
Good. Yes, the first thing I've got is a request board of approval of change order number one for Sweet Pine Road. And, uh, basically it was a, a typo, so instead of a.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donifro, any questions? All those in favor, go ahead.
I just, I, I've, I've heard, um, we, we put as far as the paving that's in place now.
Right.
It's one inch or one and a half inches.
That's correct, inch and a half.
Are we looking at adding an, an additional lift to that? Is that something that's being considered?
We are, we, we've put it back to, uh, FEMA because we didn't use all the money. There's in there, we've done a lot of the work in-house, so we're putting it back to them to see if we can take the additional money that's left over to put another inch in that driveway and all that.
Problem you got out there, Paul, is there's a lot of truck traffic. Now, I know we can put signs up and we can write tickets, but they're still coming through.
A lot of farm traffic too.
Well, it's, more is going of the chip trucks. Cause they're headed to.
If you go on, if you, if you come out of Georgia and you Google Black Mexico Beach.
Yeah.
It takes you down Sweet Pine Road and all that. So you got, I mean, you got a lot of trucks going to the mill cutting through there and all that.
I'm just afraid if you don't do it, it's not gonna hold up very long at all.
Well, that's fine.
We wanted to do it.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
All right. Next thing I've got is a board approval of change order R one, C two chip seal.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Page, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Jeffrey?
The next thing I got is a, is a board approval to reject a bid for the annual asphalt paving and asphalt payment repairs.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKinney. Yes, sir.
Y'all, we've got some issues on some roads and we keep rejecting these bids and I know they're high. But we gotta do something to fix some of these roads that are cave, caving in and all that.
The reason for this is because everybody that bid on it has told me that I can get lower prices by just getting the set roads. Because by the use of mobilization and all that, the, the prices go way up. They're, they're assuring me that we can get better pricing just by getting the roads and sending them a list of the section of roads that we can do it. That's the reason for.
Okay, but we've got some roads that we've been waiting on for a long time. We gotta get it right and get them fixed before somebody gets hurt.
Right.
All right.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor.
No, but, uh, we just need to get it fixed.
He's got a plan to get it done. So you need to get with him and make sure he's got the roads you need. Of course, they'll all be in this with five. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And, uh, the, the last thing I've got is a board approval to increase the budget on right-of-way herbicide operations.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donifro, I got a question. Um, we're going for these side-by-sides and you're planning on putting two people on them.
Right.
Why are you putting two people on them?
The, my thoughts were, is you have dual sprayer, so if you're going through the ditch drain, you need to spray around, uh, a mailbox.
I, I spray around my place all the time and I do it.
I mean.
If you get online, I'm gonna spray you.
Right, well, and that's, that's why it's not just anybody gonna be on there because we don't need them spraying manicure yards and all that.
Yeah.
It needs to be the right thing. But, I mean, my thoughts were if you got two people on it and you're just going a straight line, you can spray like, and save time, but.
She's spraying around a mailbox or whatever, on one side, the guy driving is spraying everything. I, I don't know.
I mean, and they, and they don't have to, they don't have to be two people on there.
And we, and I know y'all going with the long.
These are the crew camps, right?
Right.
I mean, so what do we need that for?
Well, I, I guess you could get two-seater, but if you go, go ahead and get the four-seater if we need them for something other than, uh.
Yeah, but now what about loading those things up and moving? Cause you've gotta move them.
We've got trailers.
How, how long?
Twenty-seven foot, I've got two or three of them sitting out there. And I mean, I'm, I've got the trucks now and all that, so.
So you're gonna be ten foot?
We got a short, uh, buggy and a, a long one and they barely will fit on.
Well, I'm, I didn't plan on both of them, I didn't plan on both of them being on the same trailer coast. I figured they, one would go east and one would go west.
You'd be, you gotta take them there.
Right, but it would just be one truck and trailer with one side by side and then one truck and trailer with side by side.
Is there that much of a cost differential between the, uh, the crew camp and the non-crew camp?
It's not, uh, it's not. The biggest thing is just, you know, the, uh, availability and price increases and all.
You haven't heard any timeframe, get on.
I, I cannot get anybody to, to tell me that.
I don't think they're right for Ken.
Uh, they can't. I mean, I've, I've reached out, I mean, uh, even, even here in Maryland, you know, they said they've got a seventy-three yard.
Oh, my God.
And they can't tell me when one of the year.
They wanna sell them, you bet they have.
Oh, yeah, and, and they got this.
Yep.
You don't stay contracted, right?
Yeah.
So we don't stay contracted. Real quick, what would be the price difference of public versus private, even with the five percent local discount?
One of, one of our employees, uh, just bought, uh, One of, one of our employees, uh, just about, uh, John Deere, black, uh, was on here. And, uh, it was about three thousand dollars more than what.
So, so I, I think Clint's, I don't price them, but I'm sure you're right in stating that they buy them, they have some on the private side, probably more available than they do on the front.
They're, they're not. Not right now.
I mean, again, I, this is one rare situation. I would support more for availability than waiting a year. It could be.
I had one dealer call me. I had, I had one dealer call me and told me they had one that was there. And I'm like, I, I got to put it in front of the board. I can't, you know, there's nothing I can do. This was on Friday afternoon because somebody ordered and they backed out on Friday afternoon about three o'clock. He called me Saturday morning at eight o'clock and said it was sold. I said, when will the next one be there? Cause I can't see.
Well, and that price difference was around three thousand for a while we.
Right.
Well, I mean, that situation, we could give you authorization to buy it within the price bracket.
Well, I mean, if we could.
I mean, well, I mean, we need them and I think that's it. At the end of the day, we're saving more than we will be with the board or something.
Right.
Side by side.
Right.
So at some point we need to, what, what price break would you need? What price break are you talking?
I mean, you're, you're looking at somewhere around, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, per machine.
So, so that, that's included? I, I'll make a motion if you find one below twenty-three thousand or two of them, uh, no matter where, obviously, then you're authorized to spend purchasing.
Okay.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Hill and a second by Commissioner Donna Prodeh to authorize the purchase.
It didn't run off?
No. We just started talking. What was that range, price range for, what was that price range for?
Twenty-three down?
Twenty-three down.
You think it was twenty-four down?
Did that work for you, Jabbo?
We did have them.
We did have them.
And then we were in discussions.
Hill and Donna Prodeh on the increased budget.
Okay, well then we'll finish that one.
All right. All those in favor of the first motion to increase the budget. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Now back to authorizing Jabbo to find the machines for twenty-three down, right?
Twenty-three less, go ahead.
Twenty-three or less. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Can I ask a question? Was that off of a state contract or just in general?
Wherever he can land.
So I would just think Clay, you tell you they would need to declare that an emergency if they're not, because they're gonna spend over fifteen thousand. And not, if you're gonna do it, it's not on the state contract.
I left my money.
That has come off the state contract? Is that your motion?
No, 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 no. I said either way. We need, we need to declare the emergency.
Declare the emergency.
We have to. I would check with locals first.
Oh, absolutely. Check one, yeah, check one.
You got that, Marie? She's adding that.
I, I.
You mean do it?
But we got the motion.
We, we just asked she added this to the motion.
Oh, okay.
We did.
Y'all good. You're good.
All right.
All right. All right, Hunter.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning, morning.
First item I have for you is requesting your approval of a CDPG grant agreement modification. Modification number one for Project Blue Sky.
Motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Fate. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next item is asking for your approval of a one-year extension to the contract to CRA for professional architectural services.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
When does that contract go out?
I don't know.
You got one more extension.
Been three years since Sir and Michael already. But we had a couple of projects they're working on currently for us, so.
But you, you've got one additional one-year extension that you can ask for a year from now.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The next item is asking for your approval of right away donation agreements for Project Lab.
Motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fate. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
The next item is also Project Lab, but it's asking to award project number twenty-one, twenty-two dot zero seven, Project Lab Phase One demolition to Loews.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fate. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Next one is asking for approval of a task force order for engineering services for Project Lab.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fate. Second. Second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
This is asking for your approval to award project twenty-one, twenty-two dash year nine HHRP rental development to the Soul Response Firm.
Motion by Commissioner Hill. Second. Second by Commissioner Fate. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five. Next one.
The next item is asking to award project twenty-one, twenty-two dash year one fire rescue storage building and associated site order.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner McKinney.
And I guess I'll ask this to Charlie. This'll, this'll, you think in your opinion will rectify the drainage problems by building that pad up, I guess?
Yes, sir.
It'll have to be high.
Are we doing the dirt work? Or are you contracting it? Okay. All right, and it shows the funding's coming from the sale of the barn.
That'll be the majority of the funding. There's still be a small, small gap. We plan to use our funds or whatever funds we can find in the budget to do so.
I mean, this, this cost is actually based on like, a bid or proposal.
This, this are the bids that we see two different bids. One of them went, went into construction, one from Missy and Mossy. The, the tab should be there. I think maybe on yours is page four twenty. And I got some pictures there of the site, what happens whenever it rains too much. And kind of proposed site plans as well.
Who was low bid on?
Missy and Mossy was a little bit.
All right. Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
Ms. Amber. We are now in public hearing.
Request to review and approve a preliminary flat to construct a forty-eight lot subdivision to the known as Sellers Crossing subdivision. The project will be located on Highway ninety approximately point six mile east of the intersection of Highway seventy-one South and Highway ninety in unincorporated Jackson County. This request also includes a variance to the Jackson County Code of Ordinances, Section seventy-four ninety-one, to allow the minimum road frontage to be less than a hundred feet.
What, what do you say?
Wait, wait, wait. Okay. Is there anyone here for or against this? Red, you got anyone waving?
There's anyone online that would like to speak for or against this? They may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine if dialed via telephone.
Okay, we do have someone in the room that is for it or against it. Come, come forward, state your name, please.
Good morning. I'm Mary Margaret Ferris with Melvin Engineering. Engineer, if you have questions.
We can't ask questions, but if you stay here. And if we got any questions, we know who to look to. Okay. We're out of public hearing. Any questions?
Yeah, the, the exact variance side. So, uh, we, our code requires a hundred foot frontage and what do they, what do they propose?
Some of the lots are fifty feet of road frontage and some are a hundred and thirty, the corner lot.
Varies.
Mm-hmm, they vary.
Any more questions? Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donna Prodeh. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right. We're back in public hearing. Ms. Amber.
Request for construction of four storage buildings totaling thirty-five thousand three hundred and fourteen square feet in area as well as thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventeen square feet of impervious surface for a vehicular use area for phase three of pack rat storage of community. The project is located at four six seven Highway ninety in unincorporated Jackson County.
Is there anyone here for or against?
You.
Put on the record.
You're the engineer of record, right? Okay. Red, do you have anyone waving?
I see no hands raised.
We're out of public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I moved that we approve the general development order of phase three.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Fate. Second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Real quick, just a question of clarification on the, uh, there's thirty-five thousand square foot of building and then there's an additional thirty-eight thousand square foot of, uh, paid. So about seventy, eighty thousand square foot.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Ms. Amber, community development.
This is board approval of a variance to the Jackson County co-ordinances for Oakdale Town Home Subdivision. This is a little different. They brought this flat to us, Flumery Flat, um, at a pre-application meeting. And upon reviewing it, we noticed that, um, the lots, so, the side lots were different and the lots for the thighs. So they're asking for a variance from me before they submit it.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second. Second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? There are none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I need to recuse myself. We may be involved in.
Four to one with, uh, Commissioner Donna Farrow abstaining. Well, four to zero. Anyway, he didn't vote. How about that? All right.
This is board approval of a variance to the Jackson County co-ordinances, section seventy-four, four oh four ten A, to allow two two-by-four building funds for an in-home business known as Brina's Tax Services and Above &amp; Beyond Fox.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Donna Farrow. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Go and do this one.
Yes, sir. This is to set a public hearing to amend ordinance twenty thirteen dash oh six, chapter seventy-four, five fifty, regarding special entertainment permit for music and entertainment festivals.
Got a motion by Commissioner McKinney. Second by Commissioner Bates. Questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. In. All right, uh, with the roundtable. Before we start that, is there anybody in here who wants to address the board? Fred, do you have anybody waving?
Sir.
Mr. Bassford, do you all have anything from the Sheriff's Department? Michelle?
I'm just want to update on Friday. I did approve, um, payment on the Graham County Land Company, Missy Mossy deal. We are writing the check to Graham County Land Company, being sent to Nationwide, the surety. They, I don't remember if I told y'all at the last meeting, but we did get another demand from a different lender for Graham County's proceeds. So we had to get back and revise, um, that agreement, the indemnity agreement, um, to include that other lender. But Nationwide will be responsible for paying everybody who's made a claim, um, towards those funds and then they have to indemnify the county if there are any additional claims that are made, um, towards us. I never heard back from FEMA. I sent multiple follow-up requests, uh, so that this was the best that, that we could work out.
You'll follow up and make sure that everyone that's supposed to have been paid will get paid.
So I got releases from everybody who had, um, provided us with, um, the notice to owner. Um, we, we don't have releases from the other subs. I think there were probably three or four subs beyond that that were identified by Missy Mossy. But we're not required to get releases from them, but Nationwide has to pay all of them. That indemnity, indemnity covers them.
So this should clear us up with forty-one seventy-seven to proceed with closing out?
It should. The, the last communication that I had from, um, Mr. Dickinson with FDM was that their concern was making sure that all the subs were, that, you know, that everybody was paid, but also that there wasn't a duplication of benefits. And I feel like we've provide, I provided them with all the documentation that I had, so they could review that.
So we all need to come up with a list of projects. We need to finish that out.
We need to, uh, figure out what we can do with that remaining money. What's the, what's the down?
It's already to your district and you've got to ask them to, uh, approve it, just like we have on Sweet Palm and all that.
With good love.
I know, but that's.
Mossy dead and gone by the time FEMA gets around to it.
Well, we've been working on it eight years.
Anything else, Michelle?
That's all I have.
What's the additional balance? What does that mean?
Uh, you got, it's, it's done in each district.
Ms. Will Ann?
I just have a couple things. First of all, we have an employee that was recently injured, as most of you know, in the tornadoes that came through. Our policy states that you cannot have a donation of leave to you unless you've been here a year and he has not. And I would like the board, because of the extreme circumstance, to consider allowing donation of leave to him.
Motion by Commissioner Bates, second by Commissioner Hill. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
I don't have a current update on him, Jeffrey, do you?
He's, he's at the hospital. He's, I was told this morning that he's up walking with a walker.
Oh, that's amazing.
He's from, from, we broke back to the service now, but the week ago, that day, I, I think he's doing, he's doing wonderful.
This is the road grader down in Alford. He was, he lived in Washington County, right at the. Tornado.
Yeah. So we're going to do our best to get him some donated leave and at the very least keep his insurance, um, available to him. And then also, uh, you know, y'all directed us to bring back a policy. So earlier today, I'm here to recommend a policy that we change the employee of the month to, uh, fifty dollars in a day off or a choice of a two hundred dollar check. And I think we just put that into the policy, if you're okay with that.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Donna Farrow. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bates. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
And then, uh, this is more just informing you all officially. I think I've spoken to most of you that August twelfth is our two-hundred-year birthday in Jackson County. And so staff is working to put together some ideas on how to celebrate that, that weekend. But if you all want to mark your calendars just for that weekend of August twelfth, um, it will either be on that Friday, August twelfth, at the Ag Center on Ninety, or on the Saturday. And we're, we're still kind of sorting through what we think would be, uh, the most ideal celebration to do. And lastly, uh, tonight at five o'clock is baseball in the park over at Madison Street for Next Step Academy. And so just want to invite you all and anyone that's listening to join that. That is a fundraising effort for our Next Step Academy for our adults with autism.
What time does it start?
Five o'clock. It is five o'clock, right David?
And it will be?
Is it five? Well, I have it on the calendar five, uh, but there's food.
But the Seminoles is going to win, right?
We're going to.
Let's keep this civil, guys.
What that entails is we'll go to the, uh, park and watch the baseball game between FSU and Florida and see who, who can raise more money, FSU or those other, oh, Florida.
Yeah, that's all I have.
We won last year. They won the ballgame, but we won the money. All right. Anything else from you?
That's all.
Okay, Paul?
Uh, just, uh, real quickly, uh, Mr. Register, um, I think I've heard that, uh, Anderson Columbia is getting close to having their, uh, their plant back operational, is that what you learned?
It should be, uh, uh, that's.
And, and, uh, one of the projects, uh, in my district is paving Fifth Street. We just need to make sure we're coordinating that with the city as far as the water line replacement. So that should be coming up pretty, pretty quick. That's it.
I got too quick, I jabbed it back to you. I've noticed, I, I, I'm sure Reddick Road was an issue too, uh, obviously no longer in my district, but you probably, when the solar trucks were, the construction was going on, I noticed on two roads, I just, I brought to my attention, Hill Farm Road, obviously there at the intersection. I told Robert yesterday, it's actually collapsed, uh, the north side of that highway. And also Donald Road, where they turn off of Donald. Robert called me yesterday and also said they got, the highways are now, because I think.
According to, he, he shared those, uh, information with me. According to him, though, that's not solar, that's.
I mean, I'm saying not solar, that's right, that's the transmission line.
Right.
Right, I'm sorry.
He, he's saying it's G C U C, carrying dirt from over there. Two blueberries from that pit up there, uh, trying to go up that one. They're cutting down through there.
Okay, uh, well whoever did, I just noticed that actually, my aunt actually hit it, brought it to my attention. But, uh, but anyway, and also I wanted to check Donald Road, I went for me with Donald, where it's located there. But Robert called me yesterday and said both places are, are bad. So, and also, uh, I, I still want us to at least look at, uh, some box blade, because at some point, when we have these much rain, I mean, again, the, the graders, because we're cutting back, we need to look at, and I, I, you know, I leave that up to you, but maybe some hydraulics that don't float in the tractor. Well, I mean, I don't know, I'd like to see the process first. I think if we have a situation that we do, we do, not all the time, but every now and then, that we need to cover the county faster than what the graders can do, I mean, I, I just get the price for four of them right now, but get the ones, in my opinion, that floats free for the tractor. Whatever you suggest. I mean, your tractor's still going to pass. If they're on, if they're on, cutting across the top of the hill, so, uh.
I mean, I have a John Deere tractor and those implements will float. You can set the lift.
Oh, I know you can.
And it'll float. You don't have to have, huh?
But you can set your tires and not float.
No, no. If your tire goes up, it holds it level. That's the.
So what?
That's exactly what it is.
We just need some, we got, we got eight graders that we have and we need, we need to cover the county quick. With those mowers, they can get on those, we can change implements, let them jump out there on top of ours. Just, just put something in plan to that, because again, you know, we're also, we're cutting back services with grader. Those tractors don't cause mirrors, but we need to hit them loads, without, cut the crown down, so.
Are we cutting back on services on graders?
Not right now.
No, I think the same, please, I hope we're not.
The fuel account is still fluctuating, but right now it is just dropping over a dollar gallon from when we were in there for the special meeting.
Right, just like after major rain events or whatever, we need just more than graders out there, just to catch up and let them do that. And again, I'm, I'm very mindful of the crown on the road, you know, they're going to maintain that, so don't look in there, flatten those roads out, but they, they can grade both sides.
Well, if you could, if you hook it to the tractor, you can, uh, adjust your weight up or down, one side or the other, so you could keep that crown. I don't know about with the, uh, with the pan tight. I, I don't know.
Whatever works, I just want it to work. Again, we get so many calls, actually bigger rain, but we just need to go out there and hit it and let them go back and mow it, whatever. But we need, we need to make that happen.
Okay. Anything else?
There was some discussion about the gym earlier today. I think, um, I think we need to go out to bid for the gym now. All, uh, you were involved in the plans, right? How hard would it be to go out to bid for the gym without the shelter part and, and an option with the shelter?
I've got to go back and look. Uh, I think there's some of those systems that are actually, would be a little bit harder to segregate, but I, I, I'm sure it can be done.
Well, we kicked this can down the road a long way and, uh, we're continuing to kick it. And, uh, I think we need to go out to bid for the option as soon as possible with the gym for the, uh, community center, last civic center, and then go out with the option to put the shelter on.
We, we could certainly look at the plans and see how we can segregate it. It'll take some modifications to the plan, because we're not really set up, uh, specifically to receive prices either or, like you're describing, but I'm sure it can, I'm sure it can.
I think we need to be pursuing, moving along with that. And I know we're going out, uh, to try to get more money for the shelter, but if, if we're moving along, I think we'll be better off. And we do have some money in the, uh, TDC block box that is for a community center, civic center. And, uh, so I just think we need to be moving along with it.
What's the, what's the seating capacity of that?
About eight hundred.
I think it might, might be right, not wrong.
Now, pretty much what we got is three hundred. It's not a church.
Depends on what type of seating you're, you're, you know, backwood style is obviously different.
Well, we'll need to look at the plan, because I have some questions about, uh, taking some of the space away or, uh, your heating and cooling system, taking, and going inside, taking, I'd rather see it behind the wall.
It just doesn't, you know, the only, the only problem with that is, is the, the area behind the wall has got a lower roof structure. So getting it out of that space to get the duck back into the higher part becomes a little bit problematic. Follow what I'm saying, I mean.
Well, I know.
You know, so in other words, if you have invasion, come straight out of the camper room, you're already in the high space with the duck. You know, it's kind of out of the building and build some type of chase on the outside of the building.
Significant cost difference. Significant cost difference.
Well, they.
No, I'll hand, I would. There would be some cost.
Oh, yes, for sure.
I've been in that ceiling. I think that ceiling, that attic up there is, is very high. I go everywhere. You got to be informed to make decisions.
It's got an attic over it.
No, in the.
It's still, it's not.
Here's the plan.
I think.
You come up and make a.
I think we're being better safe though, if we're moving forward, if we get the money from the state or if we don't. That was one of our, that was our top priority for endeavor, so.
And David, you all mentioned, we should know probably within three weeks or so, I mean, just a feeler of where we are with the. June, that's right, that's right. So we should know somewhere about middle of the month.
Yeah, just start working off. So is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Bates, second by Commissioner Hill. Go out to bid. Any more questions? You have to recu, recuse yourself.
How long can it be till we go out?
I, I would really, to answer that, I really.
There are two.
Plans and see what modifications and changes. I would say probably at least thirty days before we, we get ready to play, as you go out to bid, at least.
Want to go to further, if not, we're.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four zero with, uh, Commissioner Donna Farrow abstaining. Anything else? Stop David, wait.
And David, this is basically for some, some paving, electrical work, water, sewer, primarily, campus structure.
Okay. All right.
David, can you tell us, uh, I actually went out to see Mashman Road and I've been going the other way, but I was surprised at all the clearing. I know that I'd heard that you were clearing a little more than what we needed, so tell us what's going on.
Well, we were clearing for the rightway and so for two thousand dollars or more, went ahead and cleared all of that brash world and wasn't like doing.
Well, it is opened up.
For two, don't wait two thousand more dollars?
Out there, we just had a sign for us out there.
It don't look the same.
Yeah.
No.
It looked bad, it looked bad.
Oh, yeah, it looked bad.
Down that road and, and all the, you know, destroyed trees over the rides, so we cleared that out. And I think it was about a, uh, eight or ten thousand dollar tank of water. Fortunately, the city just got our, you know, we were short funds on, while the governor presented last week, funds to finish, uh, all Friday, so we're, we're good on funding on that.
I had been that way for a little while and everybody said, what are they doing, what are they doing? I said, oh, they're doing the, you know, clearing a little more than the rightway and I went out there and it's like, wow. Oh, you can see.
It looks good.
Looks good. I just wanted to.
Who did, who did the work, David? Who did the clearing of that? Who did the clearing of that?
Uh, the company Southeastern Construction.
Okay, they did a good job.
Uh, looks good.
So how long for asphalt?
Ponds, so hopefully, you know, we drive in there, we have two attractive ponds there and all.
Were they existing ponds or just model?
They were existing ponds, but we redid the structure. We got to put that project out, that building out for bids in, uh, in probably about sixty days and.
So that's going to be on the right-hand side?
Right, when you, when you go in there and makes that last turn of the driveway, it'll work in sixty days.
It'll be forty or thirty thousand.
Pardon?
The building size?
We're bidding out, uh, uh, the, the building, the existing, originally we're hoping for fifty thousand and that was a stretch for about two years ago, so thirty thousand worth of building on that.
All right.
We get a building out there too, Mashman.
So when they don't pave the road, is there a date on the paving? Paving for Mashman?
Completion date.
Completion date for paving on Mash.
Soon, well, it, uh, every week it rains, but, uh. Took out the strike and took out all the, the.
To go out to bid on the gym?
But now we got to pay students with the name.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, anything else?
Uh, I do have on that. David, do you think April twenty-sixth at four o'clock, is that too soon for us to have a special meeting to discuss those items?
For what, twenty-sixth?
Does that give you enough time? Or do you want to push it to May? Okay, well then I'll bring it back at the next meeting to set a special meeting. Okay.
Commissioner McKinney.
Ms. Will Ann, uh, this is before Mr. Register time, but what about the, uh, online reporting system for road and bridge? How, can you give us a date on that?
Yes, Joey, are you online or can you step in here to give us the latest on that? He, he has been working with them. They changed, uh, ownership or something and so, here he is.
Good morning. So we're really close. We've got a Thursday meeting with them. We had our integration specialist change twice, the person that we were working with to import and to make our forms work the way we need them to. So we're, we've, we've had our initial meeting to catch that person up. We've given them our list of what we need changed. We're going to go over that Thursday and then outside of that, we're going to kick it off.
So with them on? And there, anybody be in, in right, public commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Anything else?
Will there be any training for the commissioners as to how to use that?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we, uh, we do have open-ended training and maintenance with them. So anybody that we want to put on the system and have somebody log in and show us how to use it, they're more than willing.
Why?
I've got one thing. We had a contract broken, construction project that didn't have CEI services. Of course, we called it, Danielle called it, started questioning around, and we don't really have a policy concerning CEI services. And, and we rely on that as we're paying the bills, because it gives us some assurance that the work has been done. Now, I met with Will Ann, Jeffrey and, and we talked about it, but we want to bring it before you guys, so y'all can give them some direction on what your policy, what you want your policy to add.
What kind of dollar figure usually, because you sometimes CEI services on roads, are you talking about specifically roads?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so what dollar amount, I guess, will be the question we'd ask.
That's y'all's question.
I understand that, yeah.
It's ten percent of the contract, right? Isn't that the standard base? I have, uh, well, I know what he's talking about. He's talking about Sam Reed's Church Road.
I think it might have been some mine, but they, they, a bunch of them that had, had.
Yeah, and, and Danielle did.
I think.
Danielle wanted me to bring this up, that if there's money in road construction that we can use for CEI services. So, so we can reimburse, if, if you have been charged for CEI services in this fund that we're talking about, we can reimburse you, but we really, we want it, because it gives us assurance that the work has been done correctly when we're paying the bills. Now, it's y'all's policy, but there isn't one.
Does anybody know of anybody, uh, that we got charged CEI to our stuff? You would know it, so you wouldn't have any money.
Why, do any payments?
I thought that there should be something in the budget for CEI. It shouldn't come out of our discretionary when we do something like that.
She said that we could pay that out of roof.
Yeah.
But we should allocate about somebody there too.
They just set up, as they're allowing to, to come out of those, those, you know. What's CEI services?
I think there's some projects that needs CEI. And I think there are other projects that don't.
And again, I'm, I'm not trying to draw that line, I'm just saying, we need some direction as to say, okay, here's a project, we don't have it, here's another project, we do have it. There should be something that we can go by, whether it should have it or not.
We're doing like a farm-to-market road or a chip seal project, you know, a small road. I don't think it needs to be.
Well, if you're planning it in a dollar amount, that dollar amount will fluctuate with the cost of product.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's a, the ten percent is what they do.
Yeah, I don't know if they want to do a ten percent of the.
But I don't think every road needs, you know.
I know, but if I'm doing a live rock road for twenty-three thousand, are they going to sell there for twenty-three hundred dollars? You know, the same, I don't know if they'll actually do it.
Twenty-three?
I think, I think on rocking the roads and all like that, that's a little different scenario than what.
It is, but it ain't.
Well, I mean, but, but.
That supervisor ought to be able to watch it.
Well, and we had somebody out.
It's also all the shuffling of the paperwork and make sure the test can get done and make sure the test results are documented.
Get a six inch, make sure you get a six inch.
Right, and that's, that's, that's kind of like, it's kind of like insurance when it comes down to warranties and all that, because they're, they're, uh, they're there to watch it and make sure, I mean, like, I've got a guy that's been on, on the D two chip seal, out there watching it. But at, at the end of the day, does he know exactly what all, other than he's looking to make sure they put those.
But also, Jeffrey, it's, it's more than just being out there and watching, which is a very, very important component of it. But it's not just putting your eyes on it, it's documented as well, because three years, three, five years, if you're in a lawsuit, you can't go ask that person what he saw five years ago, but if you've got it documented with photos and, and reports, then you've got something to stand on. So it's more than just the visual inspection.
Can I think it ought to come out of roads? I, I know Danielle said it's just coming out of your money. It's like, no, I can do the job if I do, uh, coming out of it. But it should come out of roads. Can I think it ever come out of road, I, I know Danielle said, is this coming out of your money, it's like, no, I can't even do the job if I do, uh, coming out of my, so it should come out of road, Road and Bridge, uh, farm. But Jeffrey, can you come, come up with something, I mean, you know about it.
Uh, I mean.
And bring it back to the board?
I mean, I'm, the biggest thing is right now, we've got, as, as you know, the one is the D two chip seal, which is under construction, that, uh, C E I, and then Sand Ridge is one that, uh, was big, I was saying that he didn't want a C E I. So, um, my, my intentions, my intentions are this, and we're in the process right now of trying to get engineering tech, my engineering tech, I think if we bring them in, let them go take, uh, earthworks one or two classes. Go let it take asphalt one and two, I don't think you need to have a plan, or I don't think you need concrete or anything like that, just your basic four tests, and let him, but then when you got a bunch of projects going on, he can't be at. B two chip seal, and he can't be at Sand Ridge, so he's, he's kind of restricted to what he can do, but, I mean, that'll, that would eliminate some of the cost of it, if, if he could just be on one job and handle everything, and, you know, and then we have, just have to.
Larry was doing it, the engineer, but he couldn't stay out there all the time.
Right, I mean, and that's the thing, I mean.
But between maybe real.
Well, how much, how much is your project totally?
I got a bunch of stuff going on.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I mean, also, and, and that's great, because the money, but also, we had to also allocate more money than we could, say if you had two million, all that, two, two hundred thousand.
I mean, haven't we paid for it for all these years?
It was usually included with the project.
Let me, let me ask this, on a project where you don't have C E I inspections occurring, do the, just say it's a road paving project or utility project, do the in, the engineers that design it, do they come out and do any inspections as part of their service?
Not a, not a, uh.
Is that, is that correct, David? On a, on a project where there's not C E I, you don't do any contract administration? I almost think every project just needs C E I, I mean, unless it's a really small, simple project.
So what do you gain by having a C E I?
Number one, you know, know that you're, you're getting what you paid for, number one, okay, and number two, you've got documentation that if there are problems at some point in the future, you've got, you've got documented reports and.
So how long do we normally want asphalt, when you? They, they normally do a, a one year on what we're doing. That's all you get.
Yeah, but you're not talking about just asphalt, you're also talking about utilities too, water, sewer, electrical, some cases, I mean.
I mean, the one thing that's, the C E I does do, and it's just like, uh, Commissioner Donald said a second ago, they, they are meticulous note makers and all, I mean. David, David can tell you, his guys that go out there, they, they got books and all, they're not just turning in tickets and all those, they're documenting everything that's going on out there.
But, I mean, I know there's costs to it, but they're, they're saying, they're.
I, I, I understand, but, you know.
You said you don't want it for you, is what you're saying.
That's right, because I'm going to watch it, Travis is going to be watching it. Said he would be out there from time to time? Every day. So, um, I don't see where we gain that on, on small projects.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing that came up a lot last year when I was in Road and Bridge's position, was having the C E I was great if you had a set of plans to work off of, but we had so many projects such as the chip seal jobs, where you basically had a road name, you had quantities, you didn't set a real standard or scope of work for the construction. The only thing you were really verifying was quantities of material being put down, so I think on a project that has a set of sealed plans, stamped plans, it's a lot more beneficial to have a C E I person to verify that you are getting, you know, the quality that you're paying for. Um, on some of the others, you might could look at in-house staff, or look at it based on a dollar amount.
But, we have a contract with these people, right? That they're going to do this work at the levels according to the plans.
Correct.
So if they don't do.
Give them plans.
If they don't do the work according to the contract, Michelle, can't we sue them?
How do you know?
How do you know, when two years comes back and you buy them?
You what?
For board.
Board. Well, you hire somebody to come forward.
Yeah. That's what the C, the C E I, make sure.
You're gonna, I, I, I just, you know, I'm not, I'm not big on C E I.
Well, you can opt out of what you don't want, I mean, opt out of it, I mean, that's what I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I just think. Need to have a policy, I don't think we said it today, but you need to look at it and then that way.
Come up with a policy, I'll look at it.
I think what Rex said was a pretty good, if the project's important enough and complicated enough that you had to hire an engineer to do a set of plans and specifications, then you probably need C E I services and all of that to, to, to. To verify that you're getting what's in those plans, because there's a lot more to it than, than what you.
There's a lot more to it. If I go back to, if I hire you to do something and you don't do it right, I'm gonna sue you.
You'd be surprised, you'd be surprised at the contractors out there that, that do just what you just described, that cut corners here and.
Oh, I know, they, they all do, but they still have to do.
President, President's excluded.
Buddy, you stirred up this mess. So, Ms. Daniels will get with Jeffrey and Timmy, and they'll come up with some sort of a policy and bring it back to us, on C E I. Anything else, why? Okay. The, uh, mowing, just for y'all's information, Jeffrey, give us an update on mowing, I know they're mowing my district this morning.
They, uh, they, uh, are, they started trying to mow last week, and we got all that rain, so they, they have started back cutting now. They were, they're, uh, what they got today.
We got a couple of trees out in Spring Chase, you said they were out there taking care of those today?
I would say they probably through with it by now.
Okay, and one other thing, uh, there's a little church on, a Baptist church on Sweet Pond Road, and they sent me a very nice card, thanking us for paving Sweet Pond Road. Anybody here have anything they want to say? Who? Martin, you. I've already, yeah, I started that way and go around. Where adjourned?